Okay, I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Committee, the whole meeting to order at 6:34. Board members, as I call your names, please reply present for the public record. Diana Wright?
Present.
Eddie Ramsdale? Absent. Danielle Green? Absent. Carol McIntosh? Absent. Vera Perry?
Present.
Mike Stroger?
Present.
Okay. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. Public members that have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions to the question section or may send an email prior to the meeting. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education, by its law 1370, are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the superintendent for investigation, study, or recommendation. At this time, I will ask Stephen if there are any comments from the public. I know it may take a minute to review, so I'm going to pause to give them time. Good evening, everyone. There are currently no questions on the program as well as the community is reminded that they may submit their questions by email to fboe@flintschools.org to have their questions read at the next meeting.
Excuse me, Casey, can you hear me?
I can.
Good, okay, I'm in. All right.
The record that Secretary Ramsdale has joined the meeting. Joining us this evening is Donna Hanson and Holly Stefanski from Plant Moran to speak about the engagement with the district for audit services.
Thank you. About everyone, maybe I missed one. I probably missed one.
Hi, thank you. I think my video's turned off, but I hope you can all hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Oops. Thank you to the board for having us on the agenda tonight. I know we're all in the midst of some part of the storm right now. I hear loud thunder out my window as I speak. But we wanted to discuss with you, you know, the planning for the audit. You know, as we work through the process of planning, you know, important aspect of this process is communicating with the Board of Education in your role as governance with the district. You know, I did want to just briefly reflect and recognize the significant changes and transition the business has been through, the business office has been through and accomplished in this past year since a year ago when we sat in front of you. You know, this is a, you know, full year now for 2020's fiscal year that the district has moved from outsourcing the business office function to having an in-house team lead your business office with Carrie Sikelsky. And of course, that involves staffing up on new accounting positions and all that learning and getting people entrenched in their roles in the accounting function. You know, this does impact the accounting processes and procedures. And as part of the audit, we will gain an understanding of that during the audit. But also, the district converted to a new accounting system, which kicked off for the fiscal year 2020. And so that in addition involved training and monitoring of the system as well. You know, and Carrie has been in touch with us throughout the year as she has tackled and worked to address, you know, many of the internal control findings and items that we brought to your attention in the past related to systems or the federal program compliance. And some of those items have been, you know, needed to be addressed and, you know, haven't been in the past couple of years. But and as we know, this is in addition to all the work that's being done by the board and by administration with the deficit elimination plan, cash flow monitoring, and all the planning and complexities that that entails. So on top of, you know, being in the midst of a pandemic as well. So just a lot of work and we understand kind of the and have worked with Carrie in maintaining an understanding of all that's being done and accomplished in the accounting function and the business office as a whole. So it's a lot of change and it continues to be a fast pace of change in the environment we're living in right now. But we do appreciate the continued communication and discussions that we have had, you know, working with Carrie, you know, throughout the year. In your board materials is a letter to the Board of Education, which does speak to our responsibilities as the district's auditors, as well as discussion of the timing and the scope of the audit for this year, which is the information we're going to kind of cover with you at a high level. You know, overall, our responsibility in serving the district is to express an opinion on the district's financial statements. And those financial statements are prepared by management with your oversight. And our opinion speaks to whether the financial statements are fairly stated and materially accurate in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We're also responsible to communicate to you if there are any issues we encounter during the audit related to noncompliance with laws or regulations, which could have a material impact on the financial statement. So this is a requirement under governmental accounting standards. We do this year expect to issue a couple extra paragraphs and have those included in your report letter of the financial statements this year. They're called the emphasis of a matter paragraph. The letter speaks to that. One of these items is related to a new governmental accounting standard that's required to be implemented, GASB-84. This actually, the timing of this was actually delayed, along with many due dates in the environment we're in. And but, you know, the work involved in implementing this new accounting standard, Carrie has already accomplished this, and the expectation is this will be implemented this year in the audit. But in addition, we'll have another emphasis of a matter paragraph, which will speak to the district's deficit elimination plan and that the financial statements are prepared, assuming the district's going to continue as a going concern. And this would have been a similar paragraph that we had in the report last year as well. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, or not to Carrie, I'm sorry, to Holly, who is going to speak to the planned timing and scope of the audit. Holly?
All right. Thanks, Donna. Thank you, everyone, for having us. So our work is in three different phases. And just to cover those at a high level, we're currently right now in the planning phase of our audit. So the information gathering, trying to understand some controls and everything that were in place through discussions with management. Next would be our risk assessment phase, and this occurs throughout this month and well into July as well. During that phase, we do a lot of the, a lot more of the detailed control reviews and really getting a deeper understanding of controls, as well as some of our grant testing. The bulk of our audit procedures will occur in September, and the report will be issued prior to the MBE state deadline of November 1st. So as mentioned, during the risk assessment phases, really where we gain an understanding of all of the district's accounting processes and key controls. We don't express an opinion on these controls, but we do utilize the information that's gathered in support of our opinions that we'll ultimately issue. In addition, Donna mentioned we'll communicate to the board if we do come across any significant internal control concerns or any noncompliance issues that we encounter during our audit process. Also, as part of this process, we evaluate a significant process or control changes. So obviously, with the environment that we're in, which resulted in office closures and pivoting to working remotely, we'll look at those and make sure that even with those changes, that the proper internal controls were in place. So as it relates to materiality, this is inherent in our work. So our audit procedures are really designed to focus on areas of greater risk of material misstatement and where there are significant compliance requirements with laws and regulations. So what this means is that we're not looking at every single balance. We're looking at those areas that are of greater risk to the financial statements, such as cash, payroll, or payroll and benefits, federal programs, and then some of the programs that have compliance requirements along with them, such as the sinking fund and the bond expenditures. So lastly, an important part of our audit planning is obtaining input from the Board of Education, related to any information that you feel is relevant to us as we begin to plan and continue to design our audit procedures. So if there are information that you would like to convey to us related to our audit, our contact information's included in the letter that Donna had referred to. And so you can find our information in there. And also, you can certainly also reach out to Carrie at any time to, and she can pass along our information as well. Then we will be reaching out to Mr. Lester, the board president, to just schedule some time with him to go through some of the required fraud-related inquiries that we need to go through. And that really, that concludes all of the required points that were required to communicate with you. But we're happy to answer or go through any questions that you may have for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, the time and attention and everything that goes into the work that you two do, as I know it's not an easy process or anything of that. So, board members, does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask currently? Vera, I believe your microphone is muted.
Okay. Just a quick question. So when do we think we will be complete with the audit?
So the deadline to issue the financial statements is November 1st to the state. You know, so we would typically issue probably mid or late October. You know, of all the deadlines that have gotten extended in this situation, including tax deadlines and, you know, due dates on other things, they're not giving any leniency at all for school districts having their audits done timely. So even in this environment, that's still the deadline, and we would anticipate for sure, you know, presenting and ensuring that that's, the audit's complete before then.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions currently? So a couple of questions that I have, based on, you know, we always try to look at comparative analysis. In your previous audits, timeframe, amount of transparency, kind of a grade of then versus now, we as a district, are you seeing a decreased amount of time spent with the district for auditing? Are you seeing systems being put in place that make essentially your job as an auditor easier, more transparent, things of that nature? While we can't always control some of our financial standings, and I get that, we can control the systems that we have in place. We can control how we do some of that. And so, looking at systems management, I want to make sure that with the transition through the changes, your experience from where we were before to where we are now, what does that look like for you on your end?
Well, we haven't started yet, but I do know that, you know, through last year, again, you were outsourced for your business office and accounting function here. And so some of the delays or challenges, you know, related to sometimes, you know, timeliness or getting information at that time to complete the audit, in, you know, they worked, we worked with that firm through the audit last year as well. So this will be the first year that the accounting is done in-house. I can say we're certainly very encouraged in, oop, I'm sorry, did someone, just the fact that, you know, Carrie Sikelsky's in place. She has, you know, communicated with us throughout the year and, you know, in addressing questions and controls and items that, you know, we've recommended being addressed, that we've communicated to the board in the past. So we're, we're very excited to see the progress that has been made once we start down the audit path.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that's everything we have for you. Thank you, Ms. Hanson and Ms. Stefanski, and I appreciate your time and look forward to you not having any findings during this audit.
Thank you, and thank you again for your time. Again, you know, we serve the Board of Education. If there's any other questions or anything, you certainly can reach out to us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Have a good night evening.
You too.
Night.
Evening.
Okay, I will now turn the floor over to trustee Perry for the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting.
I would like to call the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting to order. I would like to call upon Mrs. Washington to present information and action items to the board.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to start with a brief overview of the information item for the conclusion of the job analysis project. And so, the discussion of the district's consolidation to invest reorganization plan began in September with implementation of assumptions to start the 2021 school year. The reorganization plan included consolidation of school sites and transformation of central office structures to align resources and supports to our schools while retaining core functions across the central offices to best support our school students and families. As a component of the reorganization plan, the district's Human Resources Department conducted a job analysis of all central office positions, roles, and responsibilities. The job analysis is a systematic process of gathering information, reviewing and interpreting data about jobs, tasks, and responsibility. The process was conducted by interviewing staff across all departments, including supervisors, employees, and contract staff positions, and documenting the individual's responsibility, the time that it takes to complete tasks, and observing that employees perform job functions if required. An important concept of the job analysis process is that it is an evaluation of the job and not the person doing the job. The job analysis focused on streamlining functions and services to create an efficient and effective organization centered around providing support to our school buildings so that their efforts may be 100% focused on improving the academic achievement of our students. As a result, position transitions may occur to support the transformation of central office as we move into the new school year. Those transitions may include structural and/or position actions. The job analysis process began in February of 2020 and concluded in April of 2020. As of April the 30th, 2020, central office had a total of 57 positions. Thirty-eight of those positions are employee, district hire, direct hire positions filled on a full-time basis. Fourteen are contract positions filled on a combination of part-time and full-time basis, and five are vacant positions. As a result, the district has 38 employees to provide services and supports to approximately 3,800 students at that time servicing 12 buildings and one central office. The job analysis report includes the summary and results of the job analysis, providing an overview of each position by department, and which you will see, including in the appendix within the board packet, are personnel recommendations and proposed or charts per structural recommendations. The proposed transitions and structures have been reviewed with the interim superintendent, other executive leaders, and department staff. Therefore, we seek your approval to move forward with acceptance of the job analysis as an information item and the recommended actions.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion, board members?
Yes, I have a question. When you say accept, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, anyway.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. I didn't call your name.
Oh, no problem. So when you say acceptance with recommended actions, what does recommended actions mean exactly?
Well, within the job analysis, there is an appendix that was included. And so based on the results of the job analysis, there are some personnel recommendations that would require the board's approval in order for us to proceed. And in the next part of the action process are the personnel recommendations that are listed that I will also present to the board.
Okay, so how do I know, is it, the recommendations, are those the ones in red?
The recommendations within the board packet are, is at the, I'm sorry, the job analysis is at the end.
I'm talking about within the, within the job analysis.
Right. So the recommendations are in the appendix at the end. And so there are two, it should be four-page document, which outlines the recommendations. So the top of it says appendix, and it has the recommendations broken down by each department. So and also what you will see, so the document is named, is on page, let's see, I think it was, from what, in my board packet, I'm looking at it, it starts on page 49. So it's the job analysis, central office structure, and position actions. And so it's broken down by each department. And it shows at the very beginning of the document how many recommended actions there are. Do you see that, Mrs. Wright?
Yes, yes, I see that. I just wasn't clear on, I guess I just didn't understand when you say, so basically, you're saying with the recommendation is just to accept the analysis as it's written. So, so anyway, yeah, that's all I want. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ms. Perry?
Yes, Mr. Stroger.
Just verification, I remember this was brought to HR committee last week, I believe. Mrs. Washington, you're not recommending any reductions for, per this analysis, though, correct?
No, sir. That's correct.
Okay. That's all I want to make sure of. I know that we're doing some consolidation discussions, so I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't really put anything like that into this plan as of yet.
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So are, so we're just approving the jobs? We're not approving?
She just froze up.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Are we just approving the jobs? Mrs. Washington?
I'm sorry, Ms. Perry. Yes, you will be approving the personnel recommendations, as well as, we would like your support in the structural realignments that we also have proposed within the job analysis.
Okay.
But, but we're, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
Well, we're asking for tonight for board action is the approval of the personnel recommendations based on the job analysis.
Uh, huh. Okay, there it is. I couldn't find my personnel recommendation.
Okay.
Um, okay, so question. Okay, so looking at Mrs. Renaud, you still have the same salary down there, but that's just, so you haven't included the 3% temporary salary, salary increase yet?
No, I have not. It's her salary, excuse me, her salary will not change. It is a 3% temporary increase of her base salary for those responsibilities. And as soon as a director of operations is hired, then that 3% will go away and it will revert back to her current salary.
Okay, 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 because just looking at that, I really couldn't see that. Okay, all right. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Stroger.
That 3%, how much does that equate out to roughly?
All right, let's see.
What's her current salary?
Her current salary is...
I know Miss Lester has a mathematically inclined mind, so.
Yes, her current salary is $49,000.068.
Right around $1,500.
Right about 15, yes. Right, it's like 1,400 and 1,472 or something like that.
Okay.
Ms. Wright, don't try to take over from me. I see you. I see you.
Oh, I have a question.
Are you finished, Mr. Stroger?
Yes, that's roughly for the work that she's done in that position of, her dual position, basically, because she's done quite a bit of work in that job.
Yes, sir. So that is, yes, for assuming the higher classification responsibilities and the absence of a operations director in collaboration with, under the direction of the superintendent. So yes.
Did you have discussion with her about it, or was it just kind of a discussion that was kind of made in finance and HR?
Well, we wanted to present it to the board first before that there was a specific discussion so that we'll know that we could proceed with approval, that it's been approved so we can proceed.
Okay.
Mrs. Wright, did I hear you say something?
Yes. Um, the, you know, I, I am in total agreement with acceptance of the job analysis report. But to accept the report and then tie myself to acceptance of every position in there, that's a little bit of an issue for me because, you know, I think it's critical that we really look at some type of downsizing as it relates to central administration. That's why I've definitely talked, you know, mentioned time and time again about us being really cautious with our finances and not, you know, you know, just doing a lot of hiring, especially during this time of flux that we're all in. So I completely accept and like the information that's in the report, but I don't want that to also tie me to saying that I agree with every hire that's going to be listed in this report.
Well, I understand completely, Ms. Wright. And so the job analysis is just a summary of the data that was collected throughout the process and the results of that. And so, and just any recommendations. But the recommendations, you know, to move forward, of course, is based upon the approval of the board. And so they are recommendations based upon the job analysis information. So it doesn't, you know, tie or obligate the board. It is the overall written report of the process.
Right. So can we just accept the report without the, the other statement that was added about, sort of like saying that's approving the hire of the, of the different positions in the report?
Yes, the job analysis report is the information item. What I was presenting to you next were the recommendations for personnel action for, yes.
Okay. Okay, the way I heard it was all, it was all a one thing.
Oh, no, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Maybe I misunderstood, maybe I misunderstood. So I apologize if I misunderstood.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you not finished?
Oh, yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so now we're moving from information.
Wait, did you say anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I didn't know you were here, honey.
Yes, ma'am. On the recommendations, are we addressing those later now? Because I had a question about the recommendations, but if we're going to go over those, I'll wait. I just wanted to know, are these people that are coming from outside of the district or are they already here? I just wanted to know, are these people that are coming from outside of the district, or are they already here? Um. Well, Rachel, I know is already here. I don't know Angela Turkist and the Dina Sains. It doesn't say, oh, yes, it does, it says from data tech that, okay, she's already here. I'm sorry, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Stroger.
Um, just, Mrs. Washington, for Rachel's uh pay, is that retroactive from October? Or from the date that we no longer had a su- a a exec- like a director of operations?
Right, and and that is the date, uh, Mr. Stroger, is October, is when we no longer had, yes, when we no longer had a director of operations.
Okay.
Uh, 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 excuse me.
I have a question.
Wait a minute, were you finished, Mr. Stroger?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I, well, I would like to, uh, if that is the date that the district has for when we no longer had a director of operations, then I, then that was gonna be my 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 recommendation is that we just move, that we make it retroactive to that date because she's been doing the work of the director according to the information provided. And I just think it'd be fair to take it back to exactly when she assumed those positions cuz I I I wouldn't wanna be um, just thinking last year, I wouldn't wanna be uh not compensated for work that I have been doing for uh the time leading up to uh the point where there was no director. So I just was looking at it, you know, the fairness of uh what we can do to kind of make that right.
Okay, Ms. McIntosh?
Um, I g- I guess in lieu of what Mr. Stroger just said, I'll pass.
Your what?
I said in lieu of what Mr. Stroger just said, I'm gonna pass on.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. uh Wright?
Well, I think that we should all keep in mind that the superintendent has said that he was also doing that job. So uh my concern would be that both of them couldn't have been doing the job. So as long as the superintendent was at work, then he expressed that he was doing the role of the uh ancillary operations person. So uh my suggestion would be that Rachel's uh salary increase start from the time that the superintendent went on leave, not from the time that Mr. Andrews left the district.
Ms. Perry?
Perry.
Yes, Ms. Ramsdale.
Um, I understand what Ms. Wright is saying, but there are a number of things that the superintendent said he was doing.
Yeah.
That uh didn't quite click. So my feeling is is that Rachel was doing the work uh and not the superintendent uh from what I saw. So I I that's, that's just my thought of it. And uh, like I say, uh, the superintendent said he was doing a number of things.
But I, you know, but you know, I don't wanna belabor the point, but if the superintendent was here, then we cannot clearly say that someone else was doing that job. So I don't think it's, but anyway, you know, um, but I will not support if that, I don't know how we can do this, but I will not support it from the time that uh Mr. Andrews left until now. I will support it from the time Mr. Lopez went on leave till now.
Uh, corner of.
Just, just one second. Mr. Lester, did you have your hand up?
I did, yes. Um, can you hear me? Okay, um, so Ms. Renaud, in my time of uh being board president, has been the go-to for any sort of um eh facilities or ancillary thing, um, starting back from the very beginning when there were inquiries about Southwestern and who needed to get blueprints and who needed to get this. Um, people in the community saying that they've struggled to get a hold of certain people in our district, but we're always able to get a hold of Rachel for water testing and the things that Kettering has been doing. So um, me personally, I I fully support the fact that Rachel has been doing the job without the pay for it, um, at least in my time as president. Um, I can't speak for anything, obviously, that I wasn't a part of, but I know since at least January, um, she has been the absolute go-to for anything to do with um, any sort of facilities or or operations. And um, actually, I would, I would even say before that because when we had the conversation about Vartech and um she was working through Vartech with the um IT stuff. So just, just me, I I I fully support it. Um, my experience is that um Rachel has done a a phenomenal job in that position, so.
Yep.
Mr. Stroger and then Mrs. Wright.
And uh, kind of piggyback to what Mr. Lester said, um, uh, I, I know it's kind of a uh conundrum, but I understand what Mrs. Wright is saying because, number one, uh, that was part of what Mr. Dr. Lopez said that he was doing was he was not do uh um facilities and operations. Um, however, I do have emails that were sent to me from community members and even correspondence from me and him about certain things with facilities. And he directly would say, talk to Rachel. Uh, even going to the building, he would oftentimes say, well, just tell Rachel because, and his words were, I don't have time for that. And that was as early as, and that was as late as September, October. So that's why I'm willing, I'm willing to step out and say that she was fully in charge of all that. And even, and even on the professional side, there were projects that, there were construction projects that were going on that I was privy of. And the contact person was not Derek Lopez, it was Rachel Renaud. So I'm very much aware that their projects, and that's why I asked, is it the October day or the August day? Because some of those projects did date back to even uh earlier than that. So that's why I was kind of hesitant and wanted to know exactly the administration perspective on where they wanted to kind of start the clock and go retroactively, rather than just uh saying we're gonna start on this day. Because I know that there were some projects that after Ken Andrews uh left, that it was Rachel that was directly involved with those projects. That's it.
Okay, Mrs. Wright?
You know, I I I understand what everyone is saying, and I don't have an issue with the job that that Rachel has done. Um, I need everybody to be clear about that, but I'm just speaking in terms of the facts of the matter. And the fact of the matter is, as long as we had a superintendent in place, he was the main person who took over that responsibility. And I agree that what Rachel has done has been basically what her job is, to be an a great administrative assistant. So a lot of the details that she has been giving to people, that's what her job is, to keep track of information and 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 do what an administrative assistant does. I mean, if you look at all of the offices that have administrative assistants, those are the ones that you really go to for information, but that does not make them the 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 top. So it, again, I say that as long as our superintendent was in place, he took care of that role and basically assigned whatever it was that Rachel did as an administrative assistant. So I um, you know, I I like her, I think she does a great job, but that's aside from the issue of when that role actually started, where she was more in charge of of uh the Office of Operations, so that's what I have to say.
Anyone else? Okay, saying none, the motion to move action item one point eight, personnel recommendations to the regular board for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes.
May we vote for those separately?
Pardon?
May we vote for those one by one, please?
Okay. Okay, wait a minute, I gotta, I gotta find it. Wait a minute, I just put my paper somewhere else.
You're on page fifty-nine, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Hey.
Uh, so we're gonna separate them. So all in favor of moving Angela Turk- Turkhurst? Yeah, I probably slaughtered that name.
Turcasset.
Turca who?
Turcasset.
Turcasset?
Nah, I don't know about that.
Okay, but well, you all know what I'm trying to say.
I know the family.
Angela T.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of moving uh Angela Turcasset to the uh full board? Uh, Danielle Green? Carol McIntosh? Yes or no?
Yay, yes, can you hear me?
Uh-huh. Uh, Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes. Yes.
Diana Wright?
No.
And Vera Perry, myself, yes. So the vote passes, one, two, three, four, five, five, one. Um, changes of assignment, moving Dina Sains from um, well, no, all in favor of moving Dina Sains to the full board? Uh, Danielle Green? Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Uh, Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
No, well, I changed my mind, yes.
Okay. And myself, Vera, yes. Vote passes, um.
Six zero.
Thank you. I'm trying to write and and talk. The next person, Rachel Renaud, to move her uh 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 move her to the full board. Um, please say yes if you agree, if no, uh, uh, not. Uh, Danielle Green? Carol McIntosh?
No.
Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
No, and only because of the start date.
Yep.
I know you can't put that in the record, but.
And uh, myself, Vera Perry, yes. Vote passes, one, two, three, four, four, two. Okay, wait a minute, I gotta change the page, I gotta move my my um, okay, action item one point nine, authorization to extend staffing services contract agreement. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to find my script.
One on the print.
Okay, um. Okay, I I seek a motion um and second to move action item one point nine, authorization to extend staffing service contract agreements to the regular board meeting on June seventeen, twenty twenty for board action.
So moved.
Okay.
But it's been moved, it, did someone else say something? It's been moved and second, any discussion? Saying none? Uh, the motion to move action item one point nine, authorization to extend staffing services contract agreements to the regular board uh will be conducted by a roll call vote. Danielle uh Green? Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And Vera Perry, voted six zip.
Thank you.
It passes with the vote of six zip. One point uh ten, approval of healthcare services extension agreements. This is Washington.
Thank you. I seek a motion and second to move action item one point ten, approval of healthcare service extension agreements to the regular board meeting on June seventeen, twenty twenty for board action.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, uh, any discussion? Okay, saying no further, uh, I mean, saying no uh 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 discussion. Um, we're going to uh, hmm. The motion to move action item one point ten, approval of healthcare services extension agreements to the regular board meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Danielle Green? Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Um, Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Vera Perry, yes. Motion passes, six zip.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Action item one point eleven, ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the school district of the city of Flint and the Congress of Flint School Administrators twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Ms. Perry?
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Washington, if you don't mind, take a couple of seconds and just highlight some of the phenomenal things that went into the collective bargaining process with 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 this. And um, just speak for a second about, uh, basically, I want you to brag about um the fact that we don't have, that we are now having a contract with all of our collective bargaining people, everything. I mean, um, highlight some of the work that went in here for this, if you don't mind. Please tell me the, tell us all about it.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, so, yes, it is a uh a great accomplishment and a positive example of a move forward for the district as well as for uh all of our unions in which we have a collective bargaining agreement uh to exemplify and recognize the uh the talent of our uh teachers, uh paraprofessionals, and now uh especially our school administrators and central office administrators. So um, as you all may know, uh, the Congress Flint um School of Administrators uh had not had a contract since June two thousand and fifteen. So they have been operating in a capacity where the contract has been expired for a number of years. So this um has been almost five years in the making and it's just been a a great um opportunity to be able to work with uh the leadership uh of Congress, um, coming together and collaborating um and looking at those areas that uh best represent uh their membership in uh compensation, but as well as incentives and also professional development. So that this would be a a contract that is a growth model for our school leaders that actually leverage their talents uh so that they may be those instructional leaders that uh we uh seek to cultivate throughout the district who would be focused on shaping our uh students' academic achievement. So some of the highlights of the contract I wanted to share with uh everyone is that um as we came together and we sat and um we began talking about um, you know, what the current contract uh language is, um, what is working, you know, what is not working and what needs to be changed. And so we listened very intently to um administration of what they uh had to say. And so we came together and um it was a very collaborative process to draft the new language and reach, reach a successor agreement. So we met over. So we met over a series of, um, I think it began, uh, last year, uh, right around, uh, I would say September, October. Um, and we had, you know, meetings up into all the way through, uh, May. So some of the meetings, of course, as you know, were, you know, set aside due to, uh, some matters with COVID nineteen, but we made sure that we wanted to stay connected and we wanted to recognize and acknowledge the administrators. And knowing that they had not had a contract in a number of years, it was, um, district administration's primary focus to ensure that, uh, we continued negotiations until we reached a agreement that was in the best interest of both parties. And so we reached that agreement, uh, on, um, May the twenty-second, um, the Congress administrators, uh, TA'd, uh, the agreement, and they took it to their membership. And the membership, uh, voted and ratified the agreement by a ninety-five percent majority vote on May the twenty-ninth. And so, uh, that was a, a, a great accomplishment and, uh, highlight to receive that information over the weekend. And some of the major things that we agreed upon, um, as both parties was a two-year agreement. We wanted to make sure that, uh, when we implemented this new agreement, that there was time for, uh, the membership to, uh, get acclimated to some of the new incentives as well as language that will help to shape and, um, form their leadership in the district. And so, uh, it eliminated the salary scales of the former contract and we implemented a new one-level, five-step salary schedule, increasing the starting rate for entry-level employees by approximately four thousand dollars. So there was a lot of concerted effort on both, uh, the union and the district to look at, uh, comparative salaries across Genesee County and other surrounding districts that are similarly situated, like Flint Community Schools, and just see where those individuals were starting, uh, administrators were coming in and starting with their, their salary. And one of the things that we know is that, uh, we have had challenges recruiting administrators to the district because our salaries were not competitive. And we wanted to, uh, make sure that we not only attract great talent, but we retained our great talent in the district as well. And so after those, um, those, um, comparables were, uh, brought to the table and discussed, we agreed upon the new salary schedule, uh, that has been implemented and, uh, we suspended, uh, the old one. So this one is, uh, more of a, uh, a very, uh, easy, um, salary schedule, um, that is easy to identify and follow for placement of individuals on the salary schedule. So it does have significance as to, uh, how individuals are hired into the district, where they are placed, and how they advance. And, um, and then the new, uh, co- uh, contract also provides, uh, a raise of at least three percent for all Congress members. So this is keeping in line with, uh, uh, equity amongst all of the other unions of the, uh, across-the-board increase for all members of, of three percent. And so we also, um, implemented some other, uh, incentives that we thought that, uh, really supported the balance of work-life with, uh, our administrators. And so, um, we looked at an alignment of all elementary principals, assistant principals, and AOs, uh, to a, um, two hundred and eleven-day contract. And then we looked at all secondary, uh, principals, assistant principals, and AOs, and aligned them to a two hundred and twenty-day contract. And so, uh, while we would have liked to have done more, uh, with a salary increase, not only for Congress, but for all of our, um, union leadership, uh, I mean, union members, uh, we know that, um, there are, there are limited resources, uh, within, uh, the district's budget, but we wanted to be able to build in other incentives that also, um, are effective and add value to the individual's role and responsibilities. And so, um, instead of them having variable banks of, um, sick leave, personal business, uh, we actually agreed, um, to transition all of those to paid time off. And so this also highlights, uh, the significance and importance of wellness within our organization, where individuals can now take, um, a paid si- a paid time off day, you know, um, not only for sick or personal business, um, but also for care if necessary. And so we also, um, implemented an attendance bonus, uh, we want to recognize, um, our administrators coming to work. Um, they are, individuals are most effective, uh, when they are here. And so they are, uh, selfless in how they, uh, provide instructional leadership and support to our students and families. And so, uh, many of them don't get to use, uh, their time. And so we wanted to provide also an incentive, uh, for those who use, uh, fewer than two days, uh, per year. And so that attendance award, um, is, um, three hundred and, and fifty dollars. And so, um, we looked at all of these incentives, um, to see if they can be supported by the use of grant funds so that there was no impact to our, uh, general fund. And, um, so the next was also, uh, paid time off, uh, upon retirement. They previously did not have this in their contract. And so, um, we want to be able to recognize, uh, individuals who have provided years of service, uh, to the district. And while we, you know, at this time do not offer a total rewards of, you know, um, a severance package, but we can, uh, recognize individuals who have earned, uh, PTO days and, um, you know, pay those out up to a certain percentage upon retirement. And then also keeping in, uh, line with our, um, goal to be able to attract new talent, we implemented a new hire signing bonus, uh, for all new administrators coming into the district that is represented, uh, by Congress. And so this bonus also was, um, also could be, uh, supported by grant funds. And then, um, lastly, we understand, um, that our administrators are not only instructional leaders, there are times that our school building principals have to provide coverage in a classroom due to a teacher not being there. And so we wanted to also recognize them when, uh, they are pulling that double-triple duty and they are, you know, serving in, in those capacities. And so we implemented a, a stipend for, uh, subservices. And so these are some of the highlights, uh, of the agreement, um, that we sat and we collaborated with, with Congress, uh, union leadership. And so I am just very pleased to be able to present this, uh, to the board today for approval.
Oh, very nice. Very nice.
Okay, so. Did I? Did we already have the, uh, uh, motion and second?
Yes.
We did.
Okay. Any other discussion? Saying none, uh, the motion to move action item one?
Hello, hello.
Hello?
So this is strictly for administrators, nothing for teachers?
Well, um, our teacher contract, uh, has been ratified, so we have contract, contract agreements, current, uh, contract agreements for all three unions, for U T F, uh, for S E I U, uh, which are our pairs, and now for Congress, which are our school and central office administrators. Um, last August in two thousand and nineteen is when, uh, the teachers' increase, uh, in contract was, uh, ratified and the board approved it. It's a one-year agreement, so we are going back to negotiations, uh, this upcoming, uh, weeks to begin negotiating for a successor agreement for our teachers' union.
Okay, because I'm just thinking about our finances and how tight things are, and I'd like to see our teachers, um, get raises before our administration side, um, but, okay, I was just wondering, thank you.
Yes, yes, Ms. Carol, just to, to confirm, they did, they, uh, were the first contract that was ratified in two thousand, uh, August, two thousand and nineteen, and they received, um, a three percent raise as well.
Right. Oh, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no more discussion, the motion to move action item one point eleven, ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the school district of the city of Flint and the Congress of Flint School Administrators twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two to the special board meeting tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote. Danielle Green? Carol McIntosh?
Yay.
Um, Casey Lester?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Strozier?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And Vera Perry, vote is six zero, it passes. Okay, seeing no further action, I declare the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to more than likely be President, uh, Lester for the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice jab, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance and Operations Subcommittee to a whole. Um, I'd like to call upon Carrie Sikelski to present action items to this board. And before we get started, in the interest of, of sanity, so this is a fifty-seven action item list. Um, even if we only do three minutes per item, we're looking at three hours in just this portion.
Oh, Jesus.
What portions of this do we absolutely cannot do in batch, and what could we look at doing in batch? What are we, I mean, just to, you know, let's take a look at it and see if we can save, even if we can trim twenty, thirty minutes off of this bad boy, let's try to look at some level of sanity, because I think at the two-and-a-half-hour mark, we're all just going to be rubber-stamp and stuff, and I'd rather, um, you know, create a little bit of functionality and, and have conversation where conversations do. So, Miss Sikelski, do you have any recommendations of things that absolutely should be discussed, we need to talk about right away? And then things that could potentially be put together in batch?
Sure, um, let me just pull up my agenda. So, uh, action items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, possibly, um, we already had Plant Moran talk. Um, you know, some of the facilities, the operational parts at the end, I don't know if people want to go through those one by one, but, um, so when we get into, after we get through the contracts and we start talking about actual operation items around number sixty-six, if we want to maybe do those in batch, um, what are the thoughts of the other board members?
Uh, question board president. Um, Ms. Sikelski, you said that action item sixty-six through eighty-eight could be done in batch?
Well, sixty, those just become, um, items that were, uh, you know, operational items that are being done, um, not any contracts, they're just, you know, like, you know, patching the pool deck is sixty-six, glass repair budget for next year is seventy-four. So those are, um, kind of more of the operational, I mean, you definitely can go through them one by one, but, um, they're not agreements or contracts that are being signed. It's just, um, gearing up for the next, um, fiscal year, most of them are for items that we generally have in our, you know, throughout the year to take care of, that we wouldn't bring to the board every single time, like we had glass repair, we had the elevator fixed or something like that.
Okay. Do we have anything in here for the COVID nineteen, um, um, you know, items that we'll have to put in place for school to resume? Like, if we're putting in Plexi, I think there's a, uh, action item here about Plexiglas and, um, those things.
Is something that we just did recently in the ad building, the administration building, to, um, put some Plexiglas barriers, um, for those working in central enrollment. Um, so just those, but nothing as far as, like, uh, district-wide, is there, I don't believe there's anything for that in this, in this group today, those will be brought to you at a later time.
President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull eleven point eighty authorization to issue payment to MyOSHA, never knew anything about that, that needs to be spoken to the board.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, do we want to go ahead and get started?
So.
Mrs. Wright is talking.
If we decide that we're going to do all of the contracts separately as well? Because I have a question about a couple of those.
Mrs. Wright, can you pull the two out that you need?
Pardon me?
Can you pull the two out that you want to have the discussion on, or is it the whole piece?
Well, yeah, I have a question on, um, the one regarding the legal, the legal services. Again, I have one on the contract regarding the, uh, young man who does our sound for the board. So, do I ask those questions out, when we get to the point, I can just ask a question?
What numbers are those?
Uh, let's see. The legal is.
Legal is eighty-six to eighty-seven.
Seven eighty-six. And then the one with, I wonder what's this, with Steven Renaud?
Eighty-two and eighty-three are, um, the, the sound technician.
Oh, there's two of those?
Well, one is for this current fiscal year and one is for next year. And the same thing for legal services, it's this year and next year.
Okay, yeah, so those are the ones that I would have questions about.
Okay.
Are we, um, are we going, are we including the Raymond group contract? Is that book moving, or has that already been addressed? I'm sorry, I came late. So we have not, uh, discussed Raymond at all yet, right?
Correct.
Because I have questions concerning some of their fees for their just general staff that I wanted to ask about.
So that's eleven forty-four, right?
That is, let me see, I'm trying to find exactly what page I, because I made some notes.
I think it might be eleven forty-three and eleven forty-four.
Well, no, it started at, I think, eleven forty-one, but, um, my question is on a, my, the web questioning is on page one hundred and seventy-six. It is for, um, it says standard hourly rate for Kendra and Michelle. They don't have, uh, any specific titles, it just says staff. Um, I think a hundred and seventy-five dollars, even a hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cent is expensive for somebody who is just labeled staff.
Ms. McIntosh, um, actually, this, this approval, um, you, the board actually approved the, uh, first addendum one last year. The second addendum is what we're approving today for payroll services. So sorry to confuse you by putting them both in there, but I think it, it referenced the first addendum, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to mislead anyone that we were not including something. Um, so we're only approving the payroll portion because, uh, I, when I reviewed board book, it didn't appear that the board had approved the payroll. And, um, so we do, there, uh, Superintendent Lopez, um, had the second addendum written up regarding payroll services, so I wanted to bring that to the board so that your. So I wanted to bring that to the board so that you're aware that there still is a Raymond contracted employee with the district that performs our payroll duties.
Okay, I see this is dated for July one, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is already taking place, is what you're telling me?
Correct. When, when we, uh, received, so you're going to see a lot of things here that may have already taken place or currently happening in fiscal year twenty, which is the year we're in. But as we, you know, received clarity from the board as to what exactly they want to approve, um, or what you would like to approve, so we're just trying to be compliant and let you know what agreements we have out there that haven't come to the board yet. And so as we were doing that investigation, then that's when I noticed the payroll. Even though you, Raymond Robson was brought to you in July of nineteen, this part of it was not brought to you. So to rectify that and to make you aware of what's been happening and, and that we do intend to move forward with that for fiscal year twenty-one, we wanted to bring that to you and for your approval.
So the portion for going into the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year has not been approved. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. Fiscal year twenty for payroll or fiscal year twenty-one for payroll has not been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
And after this, you know, if you want to go right, you know, jump in, it seems like we're going to be up for a minute. So, um, usually, and I'm going to lean on Mrs. Perry's expertise. Uh, don't we usually do the general fund budget amendment, the final budget, the final amendments for food services and all those? Aren't those usually separate, uh? Aren't those usually separate, though? Like, we do those in a separate meeting because sometimes we go through line item by line item on what we need to review and bring in for administration to give us clarity on. I mean, I don't want to rush this through because, you know, this is the budget for the year and whatever, uh, issues we may encounter on them will probably have to be done in an audit system. So, you know, uh, is there a reason why it's coming to us all tonight? Or is, or, um, I know this due to, um, um, the thirtieth of this month, but, um, is there a particular reason why it has to be, you know, all this has to be done tonight?
It doesn't all have to be done tonight, but as you mentioned, it does need to be done, uh, or completed before June thirtieth. I was just under the understanding that this is how you normally handled it. Uh, I wasn't aware that it was, you have a budget hearing which will take place next week and that's where we talk about the tax levy. That is a separate meeting. Um, so again, I'm just, you know, relying on those that have been here to guide me because this is the process that I, I was told. If you'd like it to be done differently, I'm more than happy to, um, to accommodate that.
Yeah, normally. Go ahead.
And, and, and not to cut you off, Ms. Perry, but you know, normally this would come to us, uh, back in this period, back in May, early May. Sometimes it's came to us as early as April and we've kind of walked it through with administration so that any questions we may have had could be covered. Uh, now to have it in, you know, early part of June, mid-June, um, and it's a sixty million dollar budget. So it's not a, you know, it's still a large budget.
Right.
And we want to make sure that everything is, all the, all the Ts are crossed, all the Ds, all the Is are dotted. And I don't, and for me, I just would feel more comfortable if we had a formal setting where we just, where we could, you know, if it was another meeting or for something else that we could sit down and review this in whole. You know, so I'm, I'm not making, I'm not making it into the finance committee cow. But, you know, for me personally, I would like to see our budgets pulled out so that we could have a formal conversation with administration and the board to review our budgets. Because if we approve this and then in first part of July, August, something doesn't happen. And the big thing that we have to do is, we've heard from President Lester, from Superintendent Stewart and from, uh, Carrie, from, uh, Ms. Washington, that we don't know exactly what the state's allotment will be for next year. It may be seven hundred, uh, maybe seven hundred dollars, maybe two and three dollar loss. There will be a loss and I know that it's been accounted for, but there may be some other decisions that we have to do, uh, leading up to that. So I just, I, I want to make sure that as a board member, I'm given the time for, to review this and also be aware of the ramifications that may come down the line. In September, when we get to a meet, to a meeting, we have to lay off twenty teachers. Or we get to a board meeting in October and we have to reduce or consolidate class size because we have to let go of some people. So for me, that, you know, that's, that's where I am. I, I just don't want to rush through our budgets because, you know, uh, the state's very good at calling us out when our budgets are accurate and we are projecting a deficit. So, you know, I know we have our EDEP that we have, um, a pass and they're a little more lenient on us. But I still don't think that we should just push this through just for the purpose of pushing it.
I agree with Blake wholeheartedly on that. I'm not comfortable doing all this in bulk. I'm sorry, Ms. Perry. Go ahead.
Perry, go ahead.
Uh, yes, we normally do have our budget, the budget and the budget amendment are always separate meetings. Always, ever since I've been here, always separate meetings. They've never been together. Uh, you know, put into a big bunch like this. So, um, maybe we need, maybe you're going to have to, you being president, have to figure out another date that we can all get together and go over the budget so board members are comfortable.
Um.
Ms. Ramsdale?
Well, I'm just going along with what Mr. Perry said. If we do it separately, then people have a chance to go through and actually submit their questions to Carrie. And that, that always helps because if one person has a question, another one has. So that by time it to our meeting, we will have questions and answers and, and that will make it, um, I, I guess the word accurate or timely or in-depth, whatever word works for that.
May I be recognized, president, board president?
And I'm trying to get in on this conversation as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Wright.
All right, Ms. Wright, your camera's frozen too.
I'm frozen again. I think I'm going to have to go to my larger computer. Maybe it's this small computer I'm using.
Ms. McIntosh?
Okay, um, yeah, like, um, like Board Member, uh, Stroger was saying and Ms. Perry and, and because we've had situations where things have been slipped into contract that we didn't agree with. We need to, being in a, uh, physically strapped district, we need to look at these contracts independently and, and really review them because at this point, um, we can't afford to yay something and we don't get everything we need out of the contract and we will probably miss it. If we do things in bulk, we have to make sure that we're getting everything we're supposed to get when we're approving these contracts. Because once we yay them, what we get is what we get. And I'm just not comfortable with the, uh, position our district is in, doing anything like this in bulk without reviewing it and having questions answered and, uh, giving the board the opportunity to kind of brainstorm together to get the best possible outcome for our district.
Ms. Wright, you had more?
Okay, is my screen frozen still?
No, you're good now.
Okay, um, I agree with, uh, this is, well, with everyone who says we should have a separate meeting to discuss the budget. But even more, I agree with what Mr. Stroger said about, uh, looking ahead. Even though I realize this amendment doesn't really have anything to do with that. But, you know, that's why I am so cautious about how we're spending money. Because I don't want to hire someone this month and then two months from now, when the state decides, you know, what our, uh, how our funds will be cut, turn around and have to then, um, you know, uh, release the person that we just hired. So, you know, ever since we started this conversation about the deficit, I have been asking that we are cautious in how we spend money. And so when I am objecting to hires and things like that, it's because I know I'm looking forward to what's coming down the line, we're going to have to make cuts, not continue to hire. And those cuts are going to have to be farthest away from the students. So. That's why I'm saying we need to pay attention to our budget when we're hiring people and buying things and contracting with people and all those kinds of things. So I said, all of that is said to say, yes, we need to have a meeting to, uh, this, to look at the budget more closely. But also to say, while we're looking, we can't just look and then keep doing the same things we've been doing.
Exactly.
We're going to have to make some decisions about where we are spending our money or spending the people's money. Um, so, you know, so I, I, I don't just say no to something. It's because I'm looking ahead. I don't want to make the same mistakes over and over and over again. And if we keep doing things without really paying attention, we're kind of repeating the same mistakes.
Yes.
So with that being said, uh, I agree with having that the meeting discuss the budget amendments and the budget in, in its entirety.
Okay, so, um, we need to pull eleven thirty-four through eleven thirty-nine out and put that into a separate meeting? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Do I, I mean, is there, do I need to do a motion in a second or what?
I don't think you need to because we're, it's just like when we vote and we pull things out, I don't think we need to.
Ms. Perry, would, would it be then tabling this or would it be just us moving to another?
That would be better probably to table it because we know we're under a time constraint as it is. So, yeah, I think tabling would be good.
Okay, um, somebody say something? All right, I moved to table eleven thirty-four.
I moved the table act items eleven thirty-four to eleven thirty-nine until next week where we can have a formal budget hearing and meeting to discuss, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, initial general fund budget, fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed budget and final budget for food services fund and fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, budget amendment to student activities fund and initial budget for activities fund.
I'm moved.
Can I second? Seconded. It is in moving properly seconded that we table action items eleven point three four to eleven point three nine. So I need to do a roll call vote, don't I? Um. I'm going to conduct a roll call vote. Uh, all those in favor of tabling, say aye when I call your name. Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
A yes for me as well. The motion passes five, uh, six zero.
President Lester, can we set a date for that? Because I know that, uh, we possibly could have people wa, listen to us right now from the state and we don't want to ignore the fact that they may be trying to figure out what our plan is. So is it possible for us to set a date for that now?
I don't think we can set an official date because we'd have to do, everybody would have to, um, uh, Mo has to do a, um, a poll to see availability.
Okay.
Um. Are we picking the, going through what we had said we want it pulled out?
Correct. I think, um, uh, Ms. Sikelski has a list of items that she wanted pulled out and the rest we were looking at doing in batch.
Well, I had another one, uh, eleven point seven nine. Because everyone wasn't at that finance meeting. And I believe these are payments. And if I'm wrong, help, uh, correct me. But I believe these were the payments that were sitting on a desk somewhere and never had been turned in to be paid. It's over a hundred thousand dollars worth of, uh, bills. So we're having to clean that up. That was discussed in the finance subcommittee. And I think, uh, Mrs. Sikelski needs to discuss, needs to say something about that.
Can that be discussed at the budget meeting?
Pardon?
Are you recommending that that be discussed at the budget meeting?
No.
Or now?
Now.
No.
Uh, question, um. Lester?
Go ahead, Ms. Stroger.
Um, Ms. Perry, from, from, you, from your budget meeting, I'm looking at that right now. Um, geez, didn't, uh. Is there any funds available for these items? I mean, I, I know this says available through the general fund, uh, does, and I know we're just saying this now, but does the budget actually reflect those things being taken out? Like, or will it? I guess it's a question of Ms. Sikelski rather. Did we build the budget for next year around those items being taken out general fund? Or are those not yet a part of general fund dollars that are supposed to be taken out?
Is this in reference to the eleven point seven nine that Ms. Perry just spoke about? Or are you talking about the things for next fiscal year?
Eleven point seven nine. Uh, are those additional fees or are those actually already built into the, uh?
Yeah, let me just clarify, eleven point seven nine, they're, um, they are payments that have, that are, that have been appropriately accounted for and, um, they're, uh, the process was followed completely. The reason why they're coming to you now as a board is because we received clarity from the board that you wanted to approve all purchases. So these are items that are sitting on our current aging that have never come to you prior. So these are not things that we just found out about. They're things that we're completely aware of. They were approved by prior administration. But again, to be compliant, we're kind of backtracking a little bit to let the board know and be aware of purchases. We were told very clearly that all purchases are to come to the board. So these are not things that we were unaware of or that were left unattended. They're just brought to you. They are properly budgeted for. They're included in the final budget that I have, um, that I've prepared for you. That does have a reduction in expenditures from the, the budget that you just approved in April. And, um, but it's just so that you as a board can make purchase approval as requested. That change was just done in April and clarity was given to the, um, to administration. And we're just trying to follow what it is that the board would like us to do.
That's not quite the way it was said at the finance committee, but I'm not going to belabor the point. But, uh, it didn't come to us. Because it was just sitting somewhere. So, you know, let's, 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 let's talk, let's be real. Let's be real. Let's be real because they were sitting somewhere and the board never knew about it. So let's be real about it now. So anyway, we're not going to discuss that anymore.
So, Ms. Perry.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Sikelski said that they were, they were, I think that the phrase or the term, Ms. Sikelski, you use aging? Is that the term or the phrase that you use, Ms. Sikelski?
They were.
Correct. Everything is on our aging and unfortunately, I, I did not, I did not speak to this item last week at the finance committee. So I do apologize if there was any misinterpretations. Um, but these again have went through the purchasing process just as all, as you know, that's one of the things I've been working on is creating procedures. And these have all gone through those proper procedures. So I do apologize if there was misunderstanding.
Yep, services have been rendered. They were sitting on aging. They had not been paid. Um, they had not come before the board for approval. As uh, the purchasing policy says that all purchases must come before the board. And so now they're coming before the board um, for, for approval. We're just trying to be transparent um, and follow the policy of making sure that everything comes before the board to be. And there were some things that we had to go back um, and write an executive summary or a resolution for because the service had been rendered, but it had not come before board for approval. And so that's the list of items for eleven seven, eleven point nine that are now coming before the board for approval.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so real quick, I want to make sure, so this portion is to pull out what we want to pull out. This is not a discussion portion. So let's make sure we kind of stick to the way the meeting is supposed to go. So we will, we can do more discussion when we actually do the voting and, and call for discussion. So right now, are there any more items that people would like to have pulled out or further discussion?
Um, what about eleven point fifty-eight for our custodial um, services? And I'm thinking this is for the upcoming school year. I'd like to see, I'd like to look this contract over and make sure we're getting everything we need out of that contract. Because we had some issues last year. I'd like to make sure that we're covering ourselves as we start up on an extended school year. So that we don't have any of the issues at the end of the school year that we had last year. I'd like to review this contract independently as well.
Okay, so you got to pull eleven point five eight out for discussion?
Yes.
Any other items that would like to be pulled out for discussion?
And did I see anything in there for Sodexo? Because I think it's very important for us, or were we asking for a refund from Sodexo to close out this school year? I may have gotten my information crocked up. Does anybody have any clarity on that?
I guess I, which I guess if, if this is going to be open for discussion, I do uh, want to know why we would need a refund.
I'm thinking because they get to finish out the school year, Ms. Wright. So we would probably get a few dollars back. I don't know. Yeah, can you answer that?
And I guess actually, Ms. Carol, Sodexo probably fed more people after the pandemic than they did in schoolwork.
Explain that.
Pardon me?
I said, that's what made me say that because I just thought about like, because they still fed students. And like you said, they had more people during the pandemic that probably didn't even go to our schools. So okay, yeah, can you explain?
So I will not, I will leave that to someone else to explain, but I know that, you know, they, because they fed the community, not just the schools, I think.
Correct.
I think they fed forty-seven thousand people.
Carrie, can you speak to the work that Sodexo did with the food service briefly?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not understanding the question. If you could repeat it, please.
Um, so Sodexo, um, they feeding students. Can you speak to, can you speak to that briefly as how that works? And um, how the district is reimbursed for uh, for feeding students?
Absolutely. So for every meal that Sodexo prepares and is able to distribute to someone that is nineteen or younger, as we've talked about here, it's not necessarily just Flint Community School students. It's anyone in the neighborhood, anyone in the community that comes um, to our distribution sites. We're able to draw down from the federal government um, the, the uh, the reimbursement from the federal government. So um, what food service, Michael Williams, the director, what he does is he tracks all of the breakfasts and lunches that he distributes. And then once a month, we um, we draw down that federal reimbursement. And um, because of the efficiency that Sodexo has in their ability, uh, you know, usually when you're doing more things in a bulk, you're able to get things at a cheaper cost. We actually are able to add to our food service balance a little bit more than what we would have been able to do um, during a regular school year. So um, you know, this has actually been a really great thing for our community. And it's also has not been at any expense whatsoever to the district or the food service fund.
That's nice.
So that being said, um, Mr. Kowski, if you want to start this off, I believe we're starting, well, you have the list of items that are not going to be in bulk. So let's um, let's begin the actual meat potatoes of the finance.
Can I just ask, did we still need to pull out the Raymond contract? Um, I know uh, Ms. Carol had some questions. I wasn't sure if I was able to answer those.
Absolutely, because I, 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 yes, yes.
So still pull those out? Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I have eleven point four one. We're going to talk about independently, which is food services. Eleven point four three and four four for Raymond Robson. And then I move all the way down to eleven point five eight where we discuss the custodial contract. Eleven point seven nine. And eleven point seven nine is for the um, invoices that we currently have on our BG. Eleven point eight two and eight three about the sound technician. And eleven point eight seven and eight eight, excuse me, eight six and eight seven. Get it wrong, for legal services. Did I miss anybody's request?
Did I hear?
You can take the legal services off for me.
Okay, alrighty.
Okay, but why?
I'd rather have those back in there.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know if anybody else had a question, so.
Oh, no, you gotta talk about those legal services now.
No problem. Was there anything else that I missed that someone wanted to discuss?
Did I hear you say eleven point eight zero?
Eight zero. Oh, you're right. You did mention that when I apologized. And eleven point eight zero, okay. Are we asked that? Alright. So let's see. So the first one will be um, by itself. Um, I seek a motion in a second.
Yes.
If we're going to pull the custodians, then technically the custodial supply budget, wouldn't that also be a part of that as well? Because the custodial.
Actually with a different vendor. That's, that's with a different vendor, but we can definitely discuss that. Which one is that?
That's eleven seven six. I'm, I'm not partial either way. It's just if we're, if we're going to hold the custodial services, then I think those are, no. Tell me wrong, I think those are interrelated because custodial services will pretty much say what they need. And we, and we provide the money for the supplying of the, of what they need. So you know, I think that kind of goes hand in hand. I would like to see us actually, I would actually like to see us review custodial service because I think we should address some of the concerns that have been uh, displayed by some of the people. Give their comments services so far. But I'm just one person.
Oh, I'm in agreeance with that. That's why I mentioned it, uh, board members.
And that's eleven uh, seventy-six. Okay, yep, I have it. Alright. So um, I seek a motion in a second to move action item eleven point four zero tax levies twenty twenty twenty-one to the regular board meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
It is a move and properly seconded to move action item eleven point four zero to the regular board meeting. Board members, as I call your name, please say yea or nay. Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Back.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
The vote pass, and yes for myself. The vote passes six to zero.
Perfect. Um, I seek a motion in a second to approve action items eleven point four three and eleven point four four. Authorization to execute and extend the Raymond Robson contract for payroll services to the regular board meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
It is a move and properly seconded that we move action items eleven point four three and eleven point four four to the regular board meeting. Uh, I, I apologize. I missed this last time. Is there any discussion? I can't see Diana or Carol. Do either of you have anything? If you're raising your hand, I'm sorry. I can't see you.
No.
Okay, see no discussion?
Quick question.
Yep.
So uh, Carrie, is there any potential that eventually this will be rolled into uh, finance, into, into the finance house? Because uh, just looking at it for what it's going to cost next year, I think we could do a lot better just putting it in-house rather than outsourcing those services.
Absolutely.
Yep. Yeah, I agree, Mr. Stroger and, and um, remember that absolutely. Um, it is something that I've started discussions with HR. And so hopefully we're able to explore that in the next fiscal year. Um, we aren't bound to them for the whole year. Um, so once we can identify a person to hire in-house, I do believe we could save some money um, doing that. Um, Phil Manpas is a wonderful, wonderful payroll person. Um, fortunately, he's also retired from a different district. So he's not interested in being hired through our district, which you know, would be a great loss for us. But um, we definitely um, you know, can start exploring that and trying to identify someone to do our payroll in-house. I, I definitely agree with, with both of you.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, this will be conducted via roll call vote. Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
And a yes for me. The motion passes six zero.
Alright, perfect. Um, I seek a motion in a second to move action items eleven point four five through eleven point five seven in batch to the regular board meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
I'm moved.
Second.
It is a move and properly seconded that we move action of eleven point four five to eleven point five seven in batch to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kowski, eleven point five seven, the approval of addendum to school bus transportation services agreement. Um, at the beginning of the year, there were some issues with transportation. Um, I know that Mr. Stewart was trying to work on trying to get those routes together. Um, and sometime it was about uh, you know, just coordinating with them uh, and getting the right routes to the right schools done. And I know that we've had this discussion previously as well. So I guess this is a two-pronged question. So have we worked out the kinks with how transportation is going to be handled between FCS and First Student? And also have we worked out a formal agreement for where we're going to house these buses? Because I believe that our time over at our former garage is coming up. And just have we worked out where we're going to be putting these buses uh, long-term?
Um, great questions and um, something that I've definitely been um, thinking a lot about. Um, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to explore some different avenues in um, identifying ways that we could save money with our transportation. Unfortunately, with the pandemic and then the um, change in leadership, we just aren't, we weren't able to pull together an RFP to, to even start looking at those for the next upcoming fiscal year. And as we all know, school starts here very shortly. And it's going to take a lot of work to get a new um, vendor on board. So what we are able to do and um, we were able to have attorney um, Lillian. Lillian, thank you. I could, I could only think of Attorney Winship. And I'm like, no, that's not who I mean. I apologize. Attorney Williams, he was able to attend our finance committee last week and talk about the transportation services agreement. So there was, it's kind of a two-pronged. He was able to uh, really work uh, with Anita and myself and First Student to negotiate a very reduced rate for the end of this fiscal year, once the pandemic um, occurred. And was able to save us a very large sum of money. Um, so that was wonderful. And then, and also doing those conversations and those negotiations, he was able to extend the contract for one more year, but keeping them at this year's rate. So typically, we've seen in the past three years that the rates have increased. We will not see an increase next year. And then um, I know um, Anita and I, that's one of our top priorities to start looking at is what can we do, where, where can we house our buses that's on district property? So that we're not paying to um, house them on a leased piece of property? And um, what other ways can we work food service, or excuse me, transportation? So that we can save the district some money. I do believe there's some opportunities there and, and we're really excited to explore those. But we need some time to do that.
Um.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes. I'd just like to say, Ms. Sikelski, I thank you for being honest in saying you have not had the opportunity to review the issue instead of pretending like you've looked at it. So I just want to commend you for being honest. I, I think that's uh, the beginning to us solving a lot of our financial and operational issues.
Thank you.
I agree. Right on, Carol.
Yes.
Okay, so um, just to kind of reiterate, I know um, some of you might not have been a part of it. But um, there was a very large discussion that the Williams firm took part in with First Student. Um, and then it was a very, um, it was a conversation that paid dividends to the district. I'll say um, that really put us in a solid spot with moving forward. So um, really exciting stuff. But anyway, is it any further discussion on those action items? Seeing no further discussion, this will be done via roll call vote. Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
And a yes for me. The motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. I seek a motion in a second to approve action item eleven point five eight. Authorization to extend maintenance and custodial services contract agreement for fiscal year twenty-one to the regular board meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
I'm moved.
Second.
It is a move and properly seconded that we move eleven point five eight to the regular board meeting. Um, I know we've had some discussion already about custodial maintenance. Um, Ms. Sikelski, before we move forward with board discussion, can you go over the scorecard results that came in regards? That way we can see kind of um, a graded version.
The survey results?
Yes, that's what the scorecard is, the survey.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, for that, I'm going to ask if Rachel could speak to those. Um, she was the one that compiled that information and I'm sure she'll be um, more versed in that area than I am. So Rachel, are you available to speak on that?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so what specifically of the, the scorecards? Can I go over, do you want me to read by page?
Um, no, I, I guess I wanted to make sure that board members have that in front of them so they can see, for example, CSM, one of the custodial services. Their, kind of the survey that was done to the extent, so you can just take a look and really see where we're at with everything. was done to the staff. So you can just look and really see where we're at with everything in regard to what our staff is saying. So I guess that was more what I was looking for than anything else. So, that being said, are there any questions, or is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, I guess on the scorecard, Rachel, was it fairly, or was it had a lot of ups, downs, bad goods, what? Just a general? Yeah, so, oh, absolutely, yep. So we asked a total of, I believe, if I'm looking at it correctly, I think it was a total of seven, eight, nine, I want to say it was close to 10 different questions. And then, we, actually, it was nine questions, and we asked for some additional comments from the staff. The staff included teachers, building principals, central office staff, really everyone that was a part of the everyone email distribution list. We asked some things like the responsiveness, the level of customer service, the quality of the cleanliness, went into the communication from the staff, if it was rated very, if it was rated well or not, the flexibility to accommodate special requests, things like that. And the overall response was fairly good. I think out of, there were some poor ratings, as it speaks to the cleanliness of classrooms and office spaces. Let me see here, there was some poor ratings as it speaks to the cleanliness of the restrooms. And some of the comments here helped give us a little bit more insight as to what the staff was really truly feeling. But overall, we had come away with the results as feeling fairly good with the responsiveness and the level of service that we do receive from CSM. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, I'm going to jump in real quick. And so, looking at the overall satisfaction of custodial staff, the survey says between excellent and good is right around 57%. Fair and poor, which in my opinion would be a failing grade, I don't want anybody coming into our school and saying, eh, it's fair, right? Like, I want it to be good or excellent, depending on who walks in. So by and large, CSM, in my opinion, did not receive a passing grade, essentially. I mean, excellent and good for the survey, out of roughly 75 people of the 130 gave them an excellent or good. To me, that leaves a lot of room for improvement and a lot to be desired for somebody who's responsible for cleaning our buildings, especially in regard to us looking at moving forward with a COVID-ready, pandemic-ready learning environment. So that gives me pause, and that kind of terrifies me if I, if, you know, 57% excellent or good, in my opinion, is failing. Hell, at the restaurants I ran, if you had less than an 85% customer satisfaction, it was failing. Because that means that...
Discuss that with them?
Right, that's my next question, is where are we at in that conversation? Where has that, has these results been shared with them? Where are we at with that?
I can still hear you, even though you can't see me. So go ahead. Mrs. Stewart, can you help assist me with speaking to that piece as far as the contract negotiations go with bringing up some of the results? I can say that I don't believe that the results have been shared with CSM.
No, the results have not been shared with CSM at, as of this point. Rachel and I have started to incorporate weekly meetings with Ray Gutierrez from CSM. And at our next meeting on Friday, it is the plan to share the results with CSM and to speak to some of the pieces where they were rated there and below.
Okay, by, and, you know, even looking at, you know, not even just with CSM, but if we look at, well, I mean, looking at custodial and maintenance, the overall for maintenance is roughly the same, 60%, it's excellent or good. And while that, in my opinion, doesn't warrant, you know, kicking them out the door, it warrants a serious conversation of, hey, this is where we look at you right now. This is an honest and fair assessment. What's your plan to improve? And if there's a solid plan to improve, we can look at this moving forward, absolutely. Because 128 of our staff members said, this is how I feel, and that's not a silo, right? So 128 people represent a pretty accurate depiction. Forty of, you know, 40% of the people in our buildings don't feel like it lives up to the standard it should be. And that's, you know, that's a terrifying number to me. So, while like I said, it's not a, it's not a, yeah, it's not a breakup worthy, right? So it's not, I'm not saying end the contract, but I am saying it warrants an extreme conversation to say, hey, listen, there's some inequities here that we need to figure out.
And a part of the plan is, so this survey was done at the end of the year. And so I realized that we're asking for a one-year extension because of the change in leadership and the unknown of what leadership will look like will begin to 2021. But the plan is for us to do, especially for this particular company, where we see that there are issues at the end of the year. So the plan is for us to incorporate this at least three or four times next year, so that we can monitor it throughout the year to see if it's getting better, and to be able to share the results with CSM, so that if so, a decision is made by our team in March, where we want to go out for an RFP, CSM has a great understanding why, right? We did a, we did a scorecard at the end of the 1920 school year, these were the results. We incorporated additional scorecards to monitor the work throughout 2021. The scores did not improve, so hence, it is time to look for someone else.
Good.
Absolutely. That's excellent. I love the scorecard, quite honestly. Like, that's such a phenomenal thing to be put in place. I couldn't be wrong, but I think that was a Carol McIntosh idea, and I thought that is just such a phenomenal thing. I don't remember exactly.
The scorecard was about through Mrs. Lockett. That's when Lockett was the one that introduced the scorecard. She worked with Casey, who was our finance person at the time, and they developed it.
For some reason, I thought that was new, because I don't, I didn't think we were doing that in the beginning, and then...
It's not new. Former Superintendent Lopez said in a meeting that he didn't like the scorecard, it wasn't representative, he thought, to show anything. But no, that's been in place since Mrs. Lockett had been on board.
Yep.
Just, just a quick, because I know this is a public meeting, we don't have a former Superintendent Lopez yet. We still have a current Superintendent Lopez.
Whatever.
Sure.
Clarification. Ms. Lockett did implement that, but they weren't doing it, and it fell off. And I did keep pushing it with Ms. Lockett, thank you.
President Lester, can I add a little something? President Lester, can I add a little something to the conversation, please?
Please.
I just wanted, just to let the board know that we have return-to-school committees and subcommittees, and one of those is facilities, which CSM is participating in. And Rachel and I are cheering. And that is one of the things that we are definitely looking at with all of our vendors, but CSM especially, as cleaning is going to be crucial when we do have students and staff back in the buildings, is to really work out those procedures. And hopefully, by doing that, we can help get some things in writing as far as like the cleaning process, and then thus improving their scores and their, the way that they're handling cleaning our buildings. So it is on our radar as a facility subcommittee, and we're going to continue to coach them through that and work through that, and hopefully improve that relationship so our buildings are clean and ready to receive students and staff.
Great point. Carrie, thank you for listening there.
Casey or Mrs. Stewart, whoever's in charge right now. I gave to our previous superintendent, and I'm not sure, or A, I gave to Superintendent Twy, I believe, a, a document that I got from Ridgeway White that was really specific about, pardon me. I got a document from Ridgeway White that they used as part of their maintenance agreement that really outlined in a very, very specific way, the expectations for cleaning. And I don't know if I still have that document or if I gave the only one I had to Mr. Twy, but I think we need to look at having something like that, which it outlined, you know, the number of times you clean the windows, what day you mop the floors, you know, just very, very specific. And I think until we have something that detailed with these contract companies that we can hold them to, it's going to be very hard to monitor the cleaning in these buildings. Because if you have something detailed like that, then, you know, that principals are aware of, they can say, hey, you know, this wasn't done, or that wasn't done. But right now, we're just kind of, you know, if you happen to see it's not done, you might say something, otherwise, you know, oh, well. So I just think, in order for us to get to the level of cleaning that we need, we're going to have to really be more specific in our agreements. I agree with that, and I'm sure Mr. White would give us another copy. I don't think that'd be hard to come by.
Yeah, so, yeah, but it was part of a contract with the school for the desk cleaning company.
Thank you for that information.
Can I jump in there as well, Casey?
Yes, ma'am. McIntosh?
Yes, because I think that is why we cannot hold them accountable, because we don't have a table set up of expectations. So that is part of our problem with having things done in a timely manner and on a regular basis. We don't have any guidelines for them, which is why I wanted to separate the custodial from the bulk, because we have expectations and we have new challenges that we have to be held responsible for facing concerning COVID. We can't have any excuse my English, any half-assing it, or any pretending at a time like this. And I would like the administration to absolutely at least start maybe looking for other companies, engaging them, and maybe watching their reviews, because our cleanliness and maintenance has been questionable for, ever since I've been on this board. And I know we changed or whatever, but I think it's largely because our expectations are not clear. That's it. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Ms. McIntosh. Mr. Stroger?
Chiming into the conversation, so, in some cases, I do believe it's what we put down on paper, but in other cases, I think it's the people that we put in these buildings. Because if you take CSM to Grand Blank or to Flushing, you'd see them do a considerably better job of cleaning their buildings as they do our buildings. And sometimes, that's just the pride that they have for their buildings out there compared to the disrespect they have for our buildings. So while it is up to us to put down what we want, in some cases, it's just common sense that you empty the trash cans at the end of the day, that you clean the bathrooms at least twice, three times a day, that you take foods on the table and you put in the trash. You know, minor stuff like that, that you shouldn't have to put down on paper for someone that's handling maintenance and custodial operations of a building, that is natural for someone in an out-county school district or out-city school district. I think that's some of the issues that we face with our custodial services is, we have people that don't really appreciate our buildings, and because they don't appreciate our buildings, they treat them like that. Because you could put in there everything you want them to do. If I said, Ms. McIntosh, I want you to do, clean the windows, wash this, wash that, wash that. And someone that has a hard foot will do that regardless of you put it down. But someone that would come in and say, well, I'm just going to do the bare minimum regardless of what is there, you know, they still won't have that drive, and they'll be back to us saying, well, you said you do this, and this is not done. And they'll be able to point to and say, well, they did it, they just don't do it on a consistent basis. For example, feature...
Once a week. But, but, my point, Blake, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, but I just wanted to, while you were in this issue. If we're going to say mopping, we need to say mopping once a week. Floors need to be buffed every other week, bi-weekly, because my thought is, yes, they probably do treat those districts better than us, but I can probably almost guarantee you, those people in Flushing are saying, it is mandatory that you mop our cafeteria every other day. It is mandatory that our bathrooms are cleaned on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I think we have, it is for us to put our foot, our feet, hold their feet to the fire where our dollars are concerned. But you're absolutely right as well, Blake. I do think it's a lack of respect for our district. But I also think it's a matter of us holding them accountable and telling them, every week, at least once a week, I want my floors mopped, and we need you to, because we talked about this, we need you to implement it in the computer, that it's been done, on what day it was done and whom done. See, we have to have some type of track record so that we can hold them accountable. So when we do end up in court, we can come in and say, on the week of June 23rd, you didn't mop the floors that were supposed to be mopped, the bathrooms weren't clean. But once this week, it says in your contract, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, the bathrooms are to be cleaned at the top of the, you know. But I think we have to be very clear about our expectations for them, versus giving them an open contract to collect all these dollars and meet the bare minimum requirements, because we're not letting them know our high expectations. But thank you. Sorry, Blake. I'm sorry, Blake.
I know. And that's accurate, but it also is consistency on our part, because if I'm the principal at Pierce, and I want the building like this, but yet, there's a principal at another building that is kind of lenient on the custodial staff, then, and that kind of draws away from the motive that we have, we have a standard. Because at one school, you're saying you'll accept what they do, then at another school, you're going to hold them to the T. And so, our message has to be the same everywhere. If we're going to go with giving them pure directions from the school board, saying how we want our buildings to be done, then we can have building-level administration saying, well, you know, during the summer, we come in and clean our buildings, so you guys don't have to do that, because that gives that custodial staff the opinion, well, if they're going to do that, I don't have to do it. And if it's mandated for them to do it, then it's not a question of, so it's, so it's, in my opinion, it's consistency on our side, because we can't pick and choose which schools, or, you know, well, we'll do this, you do that, on building level. It has to be consistent from the head, from the top down. And the other thing is, you know, I, you know, when I was on the board nine, nine years ago, custodial service was in-house. And the people who did custodial service, and I know we can't go that, we can't go backwards anymore, but there was a consistent amount of pride that was in each building. And when you would go to a building, you would have someone that'd been there for 20, 25 years, and they would tell you why they do certain things, and the purpose of why they would do it, and the pride they took in doing it. It wasn't just they were buffing the floor, it was the fact that when they went to that building, the floor looked like this, and they wanted to look like that for the next generation. Going to a school now, I remember when we had the former company that was in charge before CSM came on board this past year, and they were like, it's just a floor. That's literally what someone told me when I went to a building, was it's just a floor. Whereas, seven, eight years ago, when I went to a building, I actually got a 20-minute lecture from a custodial staff member about the importance of how they took so much pride in making sure that they could see their reflection in the floor. And that's the type of professionalism, that's the type of appearance that we deserve in Flint. Custodial services, maintenance services, all of these that we have outsourced, we need people in these buildings that are going to care about these buildings as much as the parents do in the neighborhood, as much the community members do, and as much as we do as a board, because we care about these buildings too.
Absolutely. And so, last thing I'm going to say on this, because we still have at least another two hours or three hours of this meeting to go.
Oh, jeez.
There's only two reasons why something doesn't get done, is because people don't know or they don't care. If we can eliminate the fact that they don't know, if we... If we can eliminate the fact that they don't know, if we teach them, hold them accountable and show them, and it still doesn't get done, then it's blatant that they just don't care. And so that's on us to make sure we take care of that. So um, the motion is, or the the vote is on the motion to move eleven point five eight. This will be done via roll call vote. Vera Perry? Eddie Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
And please don't get mad at me because I don't forgot what we even voting on at this point. What was, what? So much conversation.
It's the Authorization to Extend Maintenance and Custodial Service Contract Agreement for Fiscal Year Twenty-One. We're looking to do a one-year extension on the contract.
Okay, yes.
That's right?
Yes.
The motion passes six zero.
Hey, I seek your approval to. Sorry, I seek a motion in second to move action items eleven point five nine through eleven point seven six, seven five. In batch to the regular board meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, we move action items eleven point five nine to eleven point seven five in batch to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? I can see Blake, Carol, or Diana, so you need to audibly discuss if you have a discussion.
No discussion. This is Diana, no discussion, no question.
Eden, you're good.
The vote will be done via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
That's a yes for me. The motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. Um, I seek a motion in a second to move action item eleven point seven six. Approval of Fiscal Year Twenty-One Custodial Supply Budget to the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, we move action item eleven point seven six. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Eddie Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
I seek a motion in a second to move action items eleven point seven seven and eleven point seven eight. To the Regular Board Meeting, in batch, sorry, to the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, then we move action item eleven point seven seven and eleven point seven eight to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Eddie Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
And and it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
I seek a motion in a second to move action item eleven point seven nine. Authorization of payment of invoices for services rendered to the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that we move action item eleven point seven nine, authorization of payment of invoices for services rendered to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Eddie Ramsdale?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
I seek a motion in a second to move action item eleven point eight zero, Authorization to Issue Payment to Myosha. To the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second it.
It has been moved and properly seconded, then we move action item eleven point eight zero to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Miss Perry?
We need all of this explained to us, why this happened, and we never knew anything about it.
Okay, as I'm unaware of the item myself, I will defer to either interim superintendent Stewart or Miss Rachel to discuss this.
Hello, board members, it's Rachel. I can I can speak to this piece here. Um, back in on January seventeenth, a. Investigation, a complaint was opened with Myosha for Northwestern High School. On January twenty-second, I had gone out there to meet with the investigator and walk the building as he did uh some inspections of the facility. If I'm recalling correctly, the complaint was in regards to custodial safety. And while we walked the building and we went through every nook and cranny of it, the investigator issued a report. And cited the district uh for the lack of having appropriate eye wash stations. Installed in the custodial dugouts where chemical chemicals are mixed. When we had had our our finance subcommittee meeting last uh last Wednesday. On Thursday morning, the citation had come through, and it had happened in such rapid. Time that I wish that this item had been included so I could have made you more aware of it. With the citation, a penalty was issued, and what I did was I exercised our ability to file for a reduced payment, which reduced the fees by fifty percent. As well as agreeing to making sure that the appropriate eye wash stations were installed in the custodial dugouts. And subsequently, taking a look at other facilities too, to make sure that we were Myosha compliant. The fee, the penalty fee, it's uh one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and that's been reduced by fifty percent. Um, this fee is due on June twenty-fourth. And if payment for this is not issued by that time, um, which we're hoping to get payment to them to be compliant with this. If it's not issued to them by by that time, by June twenty-fourth, so they can receive it by then, um, it will go back up to thirty-five hundred dollars. And so I do apologize that it wasn't brought to you sooner, it had happened so quickly. We hadn't had an opportunity to include it, and so that is what this item is about.
We um. We're lucky. Because usually when Myosha comes in. They don't just come, they don't come for just one, while they're there, they start looking for other things. So we're lucky that this is all this person did. I'm done.
Absolutely, I would have to agree with that. Thank you, Miss Perry.
I would also say, uh, while yes, we're we're fortunate with that, some of that speaks to the work that um Rachel has been doing to make sure that our buildings have. Been put in a little bit better repair than what they've been left in. Um, if somebody comes, you and I both know, they come out here to make it worth their while, so they're looking at every nook and cranny to. To try to get that, get that paycheck, and so um I appreciate all the work that's been put in to make sure that there wasn't anything else found in that process. So any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call vote. Miss Perry?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
I see you sound like you get a little bit of pep, a little bit of energy there. Get it done.
Correct.
I seek a motion in a second to approve action item eleven point eight one, Authorization to Extend PR Services Contactor. Contract Agreement with Lambert to the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, then we move action item eleven point eight one, Authorization to Extend PR Services Contract Lambert Edwards to the Regular Board Meeting. Is there any discussion? I will say that in my time as presidency, in the last three months, I have really found a value in Lambert Edwards and the things that they're doing. Um, on our on our PR side and a couple of different aspects of making sure that uh we're cheerleading the district better than what we have in the past. And uh, I'm 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 pleased with their with their service. So that being said, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Diana Wright?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
I seek your mo, excuse me, I seek a motion in second to move action items eleven point eight two and eleven point eight three. Board Meeting Sound Technician Services for for fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. To the Regular Board Meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty for board approval.
No move.
Second it.
No move.
Second.
It has been moved, it has been moved and properly seconded a couple of times to move action items eleven point eight two and eleven point eight three to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes, um, I think I'm the one that asked that this, um. Well, I want to have more discussion about this because. If this is a position that we have and have to have, because we have to have someone. At the board meetings to monitor the mics, and we have to have someone who's helping us with the online platforms. Well, I would like to see this move to. An actual hire through HR with a set either hourly or meeting rate as opposed to. Kind of an open-ended type thing where, you know, not to exceed. I mean, you know, just like we know when we come to a meeting, we're gonna get thirty dollars. I mean, I think that he to set. A wage or salary or rate or something to go along with this position because it's something we're gonna always have to have.
So how is it, currently, how is the compensation laid out? Is it by, um, is it by meeting? Is it, how is it laid out currently?
Yes, currently, just by per hour, he does have a contract that has been reviewed by the Williams firm. And um, it would cost the district more because when you're hired as a direct hire. You do have the retirement ORS costs are going up to forty-two point two percent next year, so forty-two cents on every dollar. Um, they al- also, uh, when the decision was made to hire Mister Renaud. Um, they had looked at outside uh firms, and their cost was four hundred dollars per hour. And so this was definitely a huge savings to the district to provide these services.
Well, and I think maybe you you're thinking a little bit farther than I'm talking about. I'm not suggesting that we do anything with other than keep Mister Renaud. I'm just saying, when I looked at the contract, all I saw, unless I missed something, which I could have. Was that his contract was not to exceed five thousand dollars. Was there other fin, was there hourly rate included in that that I missed?
It says fifty dollars per hour or five thousand annually. Fifty, I'm sorry, fifty dollars per hour or five thousand annually is what the contract says.
Uh, is it my understanding that we then would have to start paying retirement, et cetera, on this?
If it was a district employee person, yes, we would be required to pay FICO, which we currently don't pay that either. Or and, which is seven point six five percent on every dollar, and also our retirement, which will, as I said, it increases next year to forty-two point two percent. So um, there there would be some additional cost um regarding that.
Jesus.
I'm sorry, it said not to exceed the of fifty dollars per hour or five thousand annually is what it says under cost.
Makes me happy.
You know, I don't. Next. If, well, I don't know what type of people. Earn, so that does sound like an awful lot when I think we get thirty for the entire meeting.
Well, may I be recognized, everybody is done with discussion.
Miss McIntosh?
Um, I think that with uh what we could be faced, because you guys know I'm all about. I'm not into these companies, I like personal uh service. I am so excited that we bring in finance people back in-house. I think we uh should be honored to have Mister Renaud um for what we're saving because I think he is uh. I I like to see him with the setup like Miss Wright is speaking to, because it is a job. We depend, we cannot uh have any shakiness or slewfulness or 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 second guessing or inconsistencies when it comes to our sound and our. Technology he has been dead on, and I think he deserves to get paid for his skill. Um, because you have to know what you're doing when you're in his position. Ain't no, oh, you gonna try, no, you gotta go in there and you gotta do that. You know, he's on the line every meeting that he shows up, it's no laxing on that. With that being said, if he's not gonna be able to receive a pension or any other uh beneficial compensation. Other than payment, I think fifty dollars is suffice, his time is 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 a is a value. And his job is extremely technical and he can't fudge it. So with that being said, I think if he's willing to oblige by that contract, I think we're possibly getting a deal. Because like I said, I like to see him on the payroll. Receiving something because if we had to pay somebody outside, like the lady said, it'd be four hundred and something dollars. So we're getting a steal, we can't always get nervous because we're gonna pay somebody a benefit or give them a little something. Because when they do show up and perform, and like back to what Blake said about when we had in-house janitors and he took pride in the floor shining. Yeah, because that was his job and it affected him directly, and everybody was gonna know who the guy was that was making the floor shine. Now you don't know who's doing the floor, he know he can throw it off on any old body, pass the book, come up with all these old sham of excuses and still get paid. So the proof is in the pudding. You know, I think, you know, I I think he's, I think he worth his weight in gold. I yield.
Um, man, I have a thing, get, we're Attorney Williams and um. And yeah, we've talked so much, I can't think, and Jason or whatever, Stephen. Yeah, were they both satisfied with the the contract?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so if they were both satisfied, and right now it seems like a good deal for him and a good deal for us. There's a lot of conversation about something I think we should just accept.
Absolutely.
I agree.
If Kendall and everybody, if everybody was happy, let's move on.
Call for the question.
So and just a, um, so at five thousand dollars a year, if we average fifty-two meetings, because some meetings, some meet, we do two meetings in a week. Three hours per meeting, we're looking at roughly annualizing twenty dollars an hour for Mister Renaud. Um, if that was a full-time employee, that's roughly forty grand a year. Um, I I think five thousand for the year for the amount of work he does, I mean, I'm, yeah.
Well, when, when you say it like that, Casey, it makes much more sense rather than thinking that, you know, uh. Fifty dollars an hour, but if it's the max of five thousand and and stated the way you just said, it makes sense.
Exactly.
Yep.
But my thinking was that, you know, if if because that's a position that we have to have, then maybe it should have been a district employee. a position that we have to have, then maybe it should have been a district employee, but I did not think about the legacy costs and all that stuff. So ready to move on?
No. That's a good, it was a good, that's a good conversation. Um, this will be conducted via roll call vote. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Absolutely, yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Blake Stroger?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes six zero. Mr. Kowski, you still awake?
I think we may have lost somebody.
I'm sorry, I'm talking and I had myself muted. I apologize. Um, I seek a motion in second to move action item 11.81, but we just, we did that, we did, I'm sorry, I didn't scratch off. My apologies. Um, action items 11.84 and 11.85 in batch to the regular board meeting on June 17th, 2020 for board approval.
So moved. Second it.
Second.
It is a move and properly seconded and move action items 11.84 and 11.85 to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Blake Stroger? Blake? Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero.
I seek a motion in second to approve, to move action item 11.86 and 11.87, authorization of fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, legal services to the regular board meeting on June 17th, 2020 for board approval.
So moved.
Yeah, good.
This is moved and properly seconded, that we move action items 11.86 and 11.87 to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Um, seeing no discussion? This is, uh, Carrie?
Eight six and eight seven?
This is eight six and eight seven.
My question was simply about, are we determining who, which does what?
Well, um, yeah, um, I'll go ahead and let Anita take that one, please.
So for eight six and eight seven, we have a few law firms that we are, that we are currently using. Um, a couple, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, President Lester, remind me if my weeks are off. A couple of weeks ago, President Lester and myself, as well as Mrs. Sikelski, Sikelski, looked at the different law firms and we also looked at Troon and the services that Troon can, can provide for us. Um, it is our hope within the very near future that the ones that we have kind of narrowed down on the list for you, the ones that we are using regularly, um, that we will kind of have a roadmap. This is, if this happens, we use this. If this happens, we use this. If this happens, when I say this, if this happens, we use this law firm and if this happens, we use this law firm. And so hopefully we will be coming to you with that, uh, that roadmap, um, really soon. But this is the amount that Mrs. Sikelski has budgeted for the district as far as legal expenses for the 2021 school year.
I guess my question is, so will there be a change in the Williams firm's role as the board's attorney?
Oh, no, no, Williams firm will, no, the Williams firm will continue to be, uh, continue to be the board's attorney. And, um, Mr. President Lester is going to be speaking with Attorney Williams very soon so that we can have a contract for, for the Williams, uh, for the Williams firm for the 2021 school year that we, that we bring to the board zone. So he will continue to be the board's attorney. Yes, ma'am.
And you know, I am in 100% agreement that we need to try to limit our, um, legal fees, but, but one of the ways, and this, it's just a brief comment and I'm gonna be done. One of the ways we can limit our fees is to make sure we follow and honor contracts and things like that because that's what ends up costing us is when we sometimes skirt some issues. So with that being said, my concern, my questions are answered.
So I, I appreciate that, Ms. Wright, and, and just to kind of piggyback on the conversation. So, um, you know, Kendall and I have had multiple conversations about, you know, which lane, who goes into and things of that nature. And so, um, at the end of the day, by fiscal year 21, the ACLU lawsuit should be taken care of. Um, we will see, because of, because of leadership, we'll see a drastic reduction in lawsuits, things of that nature.
Yes, yes.
We're, we're getting to a point where, um, we're just no longer giving people the ammo to sue us, right? Like we're just following the law and following contracts and things of that nature. So, and that's, that's the goal, right? And so, um, that's part of the conversation with, uh, with everybody is, hey, nobody has ever, uh, what I'll say is, is out of our legal services, nobody has ever charged us for services that weren't rendered. Um, and so those services typically come from, at our request because we've made a misstep somewhere in the past and gotten sued or presented some, yeah, 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 you all get it. So, uh, that's where we're at. But I, but we had a conversation and, and looked at a not to exceed number, uh, which is a drastic reduction from where we were in the years past. So.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Any more discussion on the topic?
Yeah, and I'd also like to say, I'm gonna take this time to say it to this board. I'm not gonna skirt past it or around it. We have done ourselves a disservice with the legal, where the Williams firm was concerned, the way we treated him in this past year. It's okay with questioning somebody's service, but this, this is a man that we didn't even show up for a recommendation. He threw us a workshop out of his pocket and we did not show up as a board. So when we do things like that to ourselves, I don't care how you feel about somebody. I don't care what you go through with somebody on this board. When you vote against yourself to hear from your own legal team, when you, when you do stuff like that, then it is costly. And I thank God he is a mature adult. That man got out in the middle of a pandemic to handle business on behalf of this board. It wasn't even his responsibility. So touche and my hat goes off to him and board president, my hat goes off to you because yes, cost is a concern. I don't care who you are. It is my job to look at the dollars, but I think the Williams firm has also shown improved on behalf of this, uh, school district. I yield.
I appreciate that, Carol, and I, and I know you don't give compliments easily, so I will take my kudos and I will hold them very close to you. So thank you very much. Uh, the motion, well, the, the vote will be done via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
That's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. Mr. Kowski, I think you're muted.
I'm so sorry. I seek a motion in second to move action item 11.88, approval of purchases made by the superintendent's office to the regular board meeting on June 17th, 2020 for board approval.
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, whatever.
It is a move and properly seconded and move action item 11.88 to the board for full, for, uh, to the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be done via roll call vote. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero.
President Lester, I need to circle back to one that I overlooked, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I seek a motion in a second to approve action item 11.42. My apologies, authorization to extend fiscal year 21 audits contract to the regular board meeting on June 17th, 2020 for board approval.
So moved.
Second.
This is a move and properly seconded and move action item 11.42, authorization to extend fiscal year 20 or 21 audit services contract. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero.
That covers all of ours. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kowski. I appreciate your time. Yes, ma'am.
Can we, if we have, um, if we have, um, this number of items in the future for one committee that will require lots of discussion, can we have a separate meeting rather than extending meetings for hours?
Sure. I would rather we didn't have this many items moving forward if that's an option.
Well, I don't know if we can always avoid that, but, you know, um, anyway, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I think it makes more sense. Uh, again, I think, and this is just my opinion, but, um, meetings that go beyond two hours lose their ability to be effective. Um, that's, that's my personal opinion.
That's exactly why I was making this suggestion because, um, this, you know, becomes, I mean, we're gonna, I'm gonna sit here and give it my attention, of course, but it seems like would be better if it were done in a separate meeting because of the amount of time required to go through it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I fully agree. I've been in this chair far too long for my bottom to, to be comfortable. So, um, okay, I think it's now, I think I yield the floor back to myself here. Um, okay, so I, I, um, turn the meeting back over to, uh, the whole. Go to Anita, correct? Ms. Stewart?
This is Ramsdale, isn't it? I, no, it's, it's you, Casey. It's action items 21.19 and 21.1.
Okay. Um, I seek your approval for action item 21.19, Flint Board of Education's schedule of regular board meetings 2021 to 20, 2020 to 2021.
So moved.
Second.
This is moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion to move action item 21.19, Flint Board of Education. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms.
Never mind, never mind. Go ahead, go ahead.
Seeing no discussion, the motion to move action item 21.19, Flint Board of Education's schedule of regular board meetings 2020 to 2021 to the regular board for adoption will be conducted via roll call vote. Uh, Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. I seek your approval to move action item 21.20, authorization to extend Head Start lease agreements with GISC 2020 to 2021 to the regular board meeting on June 10th, 2020 for adoption.
So moved.
I was, um, second. Living room on the chair.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion to move action item 21.20, authorization to extend Head Start lease agreements with GISC 2020 to 2021 to the regular board for adoption will be conducted via roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no. Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. I now turn the floor over to Secretary Ramsdale for the Academics Committee meeting, uh, committee at the whole.
Thank you. I would like to call the Academics Committee, the whole, to order. I would like to call upon Ms. Stewart to present action items to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Ms. Murphy and I, we're going to task team this one. Ms. Murphy, my partner in crime, are you ready? I am. Awesome stuff. Um, I seek a motion to move action item 25.3, authorization to execute FY21 contract, FY21 contract with Prime Fitness Foundation for Community Education Initiative Services to the regular board meeting on June 17th.
I need a motion. So moved.
Uh, so moved, seconded.
It's moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? We not, uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Casey Lester?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Blake Stroger? Diana Wright?
Blake's gone.
Yes.
Uh, myself, Betty Ramsdale, yes, vote passes five zero.
Anyway, I seek a motion to move action item 25.4, authorization to purchase items from amended COVID Title I and Title I neglected and delinquent grants to the regular board meeting on June 17th.
I need a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Diana Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, yes, vote passes five, uh, zero. Just let me turn my page here. We'll move right along. Um,
I seek a motion to move action item 25.5, authorization to purchase approved items from elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund to the regular board meeting on June 17th.
I need a motion.
So moved. I'm sorry, um, seconded.
I need a second?
Second it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no, seeing no discussion, um, I'll take a vote by roll call. Uh, Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Casey?
Yeah.
Vera?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it's five, zero. Ms. Stewart, floor is yours again.
I seek a motion to move action item 25.6, authorization to purchase approved items from amended school improvement grant to the regular board meeting on June 17th.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Casey? Mr. Lester?
Yeah.
Ms. Perry?
Yeah.
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion passes five zero. Ms. Stewart?
I speak, I speak a motion to move action item 25.7, authorization to purchase approved items from the Great Start Readiness Program to the regular board meeting on June 17.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, um, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And myself. Vote passes five zero.
I speak, I speak a motion to move action item 25.8, authorization to purchase items from Section 35A Summer School Reading Program Grant to the regular board meeting on June 17.
So moved.
Now you're a second.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And myself makes it five zero. Ms. Stewart?
I speak a motion to move action item 25.9, authorization to purchase items from the Educational Development Plan Career Planning Grant to the regular board meeting on June 17.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Vote passes five zero. Ms. Stewart?
I speak a motion to move action item 25.10, authorization to purchase items from Michigan Youth Arts Grant to the regular board meeting on June 17.
So moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And myself. Vote passes five zero. Ms. Stewart?
I speak a motion to move action item 25.11, authorization to purchase items from Flint Declaration of Emergency Grants, Section 11S, School Social Workers, to the regular board meeting on June 17.
So moved. Oh, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And myself. Turn the page. Ms. Stewart, got anything else for us? Seeing no, okay. Seeing no further action, I declare, um, the academic subcommittee closed. I, I turn the floor over to Mr. Lester, to President Lester.
Before I adjourn this meeting, do any board members have any comments?
Can we drink at the next one? No, excuse me.
Well, we still have another meeting tonight, I believe.
Oh, what?
Yeah. Isn't that correct, Mo? We still have another meeting tonight?
Yeah. We're gonna roll right into.
Yep.
Do we stay here or do we have to log out?
No, stay here. We're gonna, we're gonna go right into it right after we close out this cow.
Okay.
Seeing no further action, I declare the board committee of the whole meeting adjourned. We will now go into our special board meeting. Uh, time of adjournment is 9:28. Let me find my script. Flint Board of Education Special Board Meeting, June 10, 2020. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Special Board Meeting to order at 9:29. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the record. Diana Wright?
Present.
Betty Ramsdale?
Present.
Carol McIntosh?
Present.
Vera Perry?
Present.
Board members absent, Danielle Green and Blake Strozier. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. Hold on, I need to scroll down. Steven, are there any comments from the public? There are no comments at this time. The community is reminded that they may submit their questions by email to fboe@flintschools.org to have their questions read at the next meeting. Thank you. Ms. Washington?
Yes, good evening. I'm sorry, I was on mute. Okay, let me get my script. I apologize. Okay, um, I seek your approval to approve action item 1.11, ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the school district of the city of Flint and the Congress of Flint School Administrators 2020 through 2022.
So moved.
Seconded.
Has it been properly moved and seconded that we approve action item 1.11, ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the school district of the city of Flint and the Congress of Flint School Administrators 2020 through 2022? Is there any discussion?
Uh, um, oh, that's gotta be corrected because it says 2020 to 2021 and it's supposed to be 2022, isn't it?
Yes, thank you for correcting that and I'll make that notation. Um, thank you, Ms. Perry.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, the vote will be conducted via roll call. Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Ramsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes, I seek your approval to approve action item 11.56, adoption of EDAF resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Has it been moved and properly seconded that we approve action item 11.56, adoption of EDAF resolution? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion to approve 11.56 adoption of the EDAF resolution will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Betty Ramsdale?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Kelsey. Before I adjourn the meeting, do any board members have any comments?
I, I'm just going to tell you, Mr. Lester, there were times when we were at service and Ms. Perry and Mr. Strozier, you can verify this. Some of our meetings went till 12 or 1:00 in the morning, so this was good for all we.
Um, our budget hearing and regular meeting, oh, sorry, Ms. Perry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just would like to say, um, kudos to administration for commencement last week. I really enjoyed it and I've had a lot of, of feedback from people, uh, talking about and saying how, how, what a fantastic time the students had. So kudos to administration.
Absolutely. Thank you, Perry, for reminding all of us.
And I Facebook Live it while it was going on and, oh my God, we got so many shares and I, I just, I, I'm with Ms. Perry. I am so proud of this administration, especially the way you guys have kicked in in the middle of a, not only a pandemic, but an emergency in this district within itself. You guys are doing a great job. I mean, my hat go off to you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ms. McIntosh. They've done an excellent. Yep.
I agree as well. Good job.
Thank you.
You, absolutely. That's for all of the.
I was a huge fan.
All of the top administrators.
Yes. I, I was a huge fan of the commencement. I thought it was an amazing, amazing thing. Not just because I got to see myself on a big screen, but it was just a really good. It was awesome. I mean, the, the entire thing put together, the kids did such a phenomenal job. And I mean, um, how, you know, how amazing it is to think about what they've done and what they've gone through this year alone and to still rise above all the, you know, the term I want to say isn't appropriate for, um, a public meeting, but to rise above all the nonsense that, um, they've gone through this year is just, it's phenomenal. And we have just, have such a strong class of students that, um, it just makes me swell with pride with everything. So, um, I, I appreciate everybody and all the work that was put in to make sure that, um, our kids who have worked so hard for their entire life didn't miss out on such an important, wonderful celebration. It was excellent. I, I really appreciate the effort put in by everybody.
Yep, well said, Casey, and it, and it's true. It brought them closure to their school career with us and they got to shine. It, it's so important because they're wonderful. You're right. Strong, strong group of young people.
So our budget hearing and regular meeting will be held next Wednesday, June 17 at 6:30 PM. Seeing no further action, I declare the special board meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.